All right, thank you, sorry for the delay. Let's call this the order. Welcome, and we have a show for you, so watch the screens around the room.
No show tonight?
No show tonight?
We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
All right, we're moving forward with a big agenda then. All right, welcome to the, hold on, let me get my little paper under so I can read it officially. Welcome to the meeting in North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, May 9th, 2017. Tonight is a regularly scheduled work session followed by a special action meeting. We will do the special action meeting first tonight. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. So, good evening. We're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance, please stand.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So tonight is a favorite part of our regular meetings, it's proclamation time. So, Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. We are pleased this evening to recognize members of the Bridle Path and Montgomery Elementary String Ensemble, and with us tonight to introduce the students, we have Ralph Jackson, the orchestra's director.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. So I have sixth grade members of the Bridle Path and Montgomery Elementary Select String Ensemble. We have thirty members in our orchestra, this is our top orchestra, and these students auditioned and were invited to perform at the Kennedy Center this spring, in April, a couple weeks ago, as part of the symphonic series at the Kennedy Center in Washington, DC. And they were the only elementary school invited, they performed alongside of all the other groups from high schools. They had the highest ratings from the judges, and they received this huge standing ovation, so they represented us very well. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank my principals and the administrators of North Penn and the school board for supporting these types of activities and allowing our students to go out on these types of things. It's not only a wonderful opportunity for the students and their families, but they serve as ambassadors for this school district and for this community, and they've really represented us very well, so we should all be proud. And I'm gonna introduce the sixth graders. We have Anna Babencheck.
We weren't that prepared. You have that order again?
Yes.
It's Anna.
It's not like we do this every month. We don't. Andy Moss, turn around, let everybody see you. There you go.
That's why we found your face, too. All right. Bryn Biddle. This is Bryn Biddle.
Great job, thank you.
Sindhu Desari.
Sindhu, how you doing? Good.
Erin Delgado.
Well, congratulations.
Nathaniel Kim.
Hold on, Ralph. We didn't have them in order.
Good job, Casey.
Daniel O., who is not present this evening. Megan Pierce. Megan Pierce. And Hannah Pierce.
Well, Megan, congratulations to you.
Hannah Pierce. Annie Pearson. Joseph Yi. And Samantha Yuen.
Joseph, congratulations.
Another pleasure to meet you, everyone, so we're gonna let you come through and shake the hand with all the administrators and board members, so please. And Ralph, would you join them at the end?
job, great job. Thank you, Ralph, really appreciate what you did.
Another round of applause. Good job, Ralph. Good job. Congratulations.
I've got a hand for that performance there. It's like that. I know, I used to do it, trust me.
When it goes wrong, really bad.
What they did was, they were in order, but they were dropped.
Also this evening, we are pleased to recognize our German students who competed in the national language exam, and with us this evening to recognize these students, we have the German teacher at North Penn High School, Andrew Baker.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Andrew Baker, thank you so much, Superintendent Dietrich, for the introduction. I'm the German teacher over at North Penn High School. I also am active over there as the advisor for the German club and also for the International Friendship Committee, making sure that everything's going smoothly with our exchange students there and abroad. What I'm here specifically to talk to about tonight is the achievements of the students standing before you and a few who couldn't make it on the national German exam that was administered back in January. This is an extremely difficult and much different test than I took when I went to North Penn. It was, it's an, it tests the application of all the grammar and all the vocabulary skills that they've learned over the last five years or three years, as the case might be, using authentic written and spoken texts. They are to take out the information that they possibly can and then answer questions based on that text that would be given to any German student just as well, in a newspaper, a podcast, or the like. So yeah, the students before you have achieved either a gold or silver award on the national German exam, and for those of the students who are attending college next year, who are seniors, I'd also like to just announce that in honor of them. Before I do that, of course, I'd also like to thank the parents and everything that they've done in supporting the achievements of their children, and also my German colleagues at the middle schools who also couldn't make it tonight. The first person is a sophomore, he received a gold award. He's a native speaker, his mother is German, but even among that select group of students, he achieved a gold award. So, that's for Alex Abind, who unfortunately could not be here tonight. Jack Bradley, who also, it's right now for seniors especially, the throes of AP testing, as I think that you're all aware of. He'll be attending Drexel next year, but he also achieved a gold, a gold award on the national German exam. A very special accommodation, not accommodation, accolade for one of our students here tonight, Cindy Jessica, who will also be attending Drexel in the fall, received the highest score on the national German exam in the entire region. She's a returning German exchange student, so I'm particularly proud of that, but yeah, she got the top score in the entire area, which is just an amazing achievement.
Additionally, tonight, we also have another gold award winner. She will be attending Gettysburg College in the fall. This is Mel Karcher.
Connor Moore also received a gold award, that is to say, achieved in the top ten percentile, in the top ninetieth percentile, sorry, of all test takers, and he will be attending Penn State. Another senior, Lori Park, achieved a silver award. She will be attending George Mason in the fall, and you will see her next week as well for the Japanese award ceremony. Divya Rajmohan, she'll be attending Temple in the fall and received a silver award on the national German exam. Another sophomore, we have Ally Robinson, who achieved a silver award. And then another one of our returning exchange students from Germany, she spent the year in North Germany, this is Leanne Spiegel. She is attending Temple in the fall, but is unfortunately sick this evening. And lastly, bringing up the caboose of the group, we have Chris Yang. He'll be attending Princeton in the fall, and he achieved a silver award on the German national exam. So yeah, thank you all for what you do in support of the foreign language community we have at North Penn, and thank you so much.
I would like the full board and the full administration to be able to congratulate each and every one of you, so they'll ask you to come through, and I'd like to say that unfortunately, earlier in this term, we lost Frau Murphy, who was a German teacher at the high school for many years, and I'm sure she would've been proud of you guys. So come on through. Now would you join them at the end, please?
Please.
Awesome, well done again. Well done again, Mel. Well done. Congratulations. Well done again. Well done. Good luck. I'm gonna say thank you, and I wanna give you, these are the guys who want your time for us, and something for you, too. And I'll tell ya, I think Carolyn wants us. Please, another round of applause for these guys. Before we move on, if you wanna join your families, go ahead. We're gonna read off when this is gonna be replayed, so you can see the huge blunder with the stuff in the beginning, and then your kids, which would be great.
You can laugh at me again. Okay, this school board meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable 28 and Verizon Fios 29 on the following dates, Wednesday, May 10th at 7:30 PM, Thursday, May 11th, 12:30 PM and 7:30 PM, Friday, May 12th, 12:30 PM and 7:30 PM, and Monday, May 15th, 12:30 PM. Thank you.
Most of you didn't hear what Andrew said, that his German teacher was Carolyn, so that was, that would've been a fitting touch to this. As, before we move into our Audience of Citizens, I do wanna make a public announcement that the board did meet an executive session on May 19th, or May 9th today, from roughly 6:30 to 7:30, 5:00 PM, to discuss matters of negotiations. All right, we're gonna move forward with our agenda tonight. It is now Audience of Citizens, anybody wishing to speak to the board under this special action agenda, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook.
Hi, my name's Tina Stoll, and I live at 132 Wentworth Drive in Lansdale, and I just wanted to make two comments. One was about the ECP meeting last night. I was sorry I couldn't attend it, I had another meeting, but I got here late after the meeting already let out, and I was sorry to hear that the feasibility study on full-day kindergarten wasn't voted to move forward to the full board for discussion. And my second comment was, I heard from the young moms that were there, that two of the ECP members thought that they were ambushed, and I just wanna say that I specifically asked the chairperson of the ECP meeting at the April meeting about the feasibility study and if it was okay to let people know about it, and I was told it was an open meeting, so I'm not sure why anybody would think that it would be a surprise that there would be a lot of people there, so.
Tina, I did not say that it was an ambush.
I didn't say you did.
Okay, I'm just making it clear, because I did say to you, it was a public meeting and anyone could attend.
Right, and that's why I'm just wondering why anyone would think that they were ambushed if, you know, I asked you about it, so, okay? Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Fusco, I live at 1006 Sawmill Way in Toomah Minson. I would like to take a couple minutes and talk about last night's ECP meeting as well. I, too, am disappointed that the committee decided not to vote to move the conversation forward to the full board. I was a little surprised as well, considering the amount of effort that has already gone into the presentation, a year-long pilot with five different kindergarten scenarios considered. It is clearly a need, as demonstrated by incoming kindergarten scores on DIBELS and other assessments that show that year over year, we're seeing a decline in skill level. It was a well-attended meeting, there were many mostly young moms at the meeting that wanted to, really, they wanted to discuss one of the five options, which was the full-day kindergarten option. One after another, they came up here, and they started by saying, "I had no intention of coming to speak tonight, but," and then they followed it with their reason, or their suggestion, or their input. One mother commented about how her son didn't like going to his first school, his first school being kindergarten, he's an AM kindergarten, and of course goes to aftercare at a different school, and he said, she said that he didn't like it because he didn't have time to socialize, that he didn't make any friends because it was too work-intensive. Another parent talked about the workload in terms of the homework expectations, because the teachers feel overwhelmed with the amount that they have to get done in such a short school day. Yet another mother talked about her reluctance to wanna move to North Penn because she taught in New Jersey in a school that did offer full-day kindergarten, and she felt that she was cheating her children out of the experience by ringing them here. And then we even had a mom who was an architect, who tried to discuss how to maybe take a deliberate slower approach to implementing the program through one school at a time, adding bathrooms where they might be needed and that type of thing. Now, of course, full-day kindergarten is gonna be an expense, it's gonna put a burden on our infrastructure, it's a huge project to tackle. That said, sixty-eight percent of districts in our county have already taken the steps to address that, and are moving forward, or have already started their programs. They face the exact same pension percent of payroll that we face, they face budget crunches as well, and somehow, some way, they have managed to move forward with that initiative. All that was asked last night was that we could vote to further the conversation, so I was deeply disappointed that we feel, even though all of our neighbors seem to be going ahead and moving forward with this, we still think it's premature to have this discussion. And just one last point about this, is that, again, with the concern for the taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer, anyone who lives in this district is a taxpayer. We're all concerned about what's happening because of Harrisburg, and how it trickles down, and what that means for those of you who have to make sense out of some of the craziness that comes from up there. Right? I feel for seniors who are living on fixed incomes. My mother lives with me, so believe me, I understand. But I did wanna make this point, that in the information that was displayed the other night, or last night, there's 791 kindergartners, thirty-two percent of which go to before-and-aftercare. My son went last year, I paid $140 a week for aftercare, I think it was maybe forty weeks. When you do the math on that, that's $1.15 million that families in North Penn, young families, are paying in order to subsidize our budget and not offer them this full-day program. So we should consider that as well when we're considering the taxpayers, because they too are taxpayers, and there is a very hefty burden that we are placing on them by not offering this program, by not offering full-day kindergarten. Again, and to bring, we want to bring young families like mine into this community, are we chasing them away, are we making other school districts more appealing because they do offer this and we don't? There's a lot of considerations, and I just hope that we're willing to expand our minds on this, and maybe think outside the box a little bit, and show a little courage, and give it a little more consideration. Thank you.
I live on 802 Yorktown Street in Lansdale, and I hail from North Penn's NAP Elementary School. I have two children at NAP, I have a fifth grader and a third grader. We love NAP, we love the close-knit feeling, we have a wonderful guidance counselor and awesome teachers. My concern is class size, and my concern is a Band-Aid that keeps getting put onto our schools over and over again. So, especially NAP. My son is in third grade, and there are a total of eighty-nine children enrolled right now. They have four teachers. This is nice. It goes pretty well. The teachers are able to manage children, teach what they need to teach, and maybe have a little bit of fun in their day, but we're not guaranteed that we will have four teachers next year, which will raise that to thirty children in one classroom. Okay? My fifth-grade child as well, right now has three teachers, and NAP is fun, we fluctuate enrollment constantly. I love it. I love, I love the diversity that we have in our school, but we know that we get students within September that didn't register over the summer, or in June, when you're supposed to come and register, because they just moved, or they didn't know. And so they come in, and now my daughter, we think she has twenty-four in her class, and in this September, she wanted to make pies for a great activity that the teacher had her do, go shop, go figure out all of the, you know, cost and savings, and she had to do this whole project, and she said, "Mom, there's twenty-eight." I was like, "What? In one class? Twenty-eight students? How do you reach every student?" We have amazing teachers. You can't reach every student. It is a very difficult, yes.
Excuse me, you said NAP?
NAP.
What third, what grade?
They are now down to twenty-six.
What grade?
Fifth grade.
Okay, I thought you said third.
They, I'm sorry, this was back to fifth. I have a fifth and a third grader, so I was jumping back to the fifth grader.
Just what I have, although I have.
No, that's good, thank you. So the fifth-grade classroom, in the fall, jumped to about twenty-eight, twenty-seven in one of the classrooms, and now they're back down. There's a fluctuation that happens. Again, one or two children doesn't bother you. I have my master's in education, I work with the young children that really need to come to kindergarten full-day, because all of the research says that, and if you haven't read it, please do, there's something called the National Association of Education for Young Children, and they've been around forever, and it says that the earlier we get kids into full-day experiences in a learning environment, the better they do later as citizens and as learners. But we also know that the earlier we start, we need a smaller-room environment, because teachers can reach people better when it's behaviors, and that's what we're seeing. Behaviors are out of the teacher's hands at this point. My daughter happens to be someone that enjoys school and loves her teachers and loves her classmates, but it becomes very stressful when we're in a group with twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the teacher is not able to reach everybody. We need to look at this, I'm just asking for us to start to have these open conversations, because over and over again, we have a lot of people moving into this area, we have these small buildings that weren't meant for all of these people to come in and start coming to our schools, and we need to look at what kind of quality are we giving our kids? And right next door, in other districts, they're doing that. They have the full-day kindergarten, they are maintaining different guidelines. So the last thing I'll say is, there's a guideline for certain age groups. Thirty in a class is the guideline, but is that best practice? Do we just say, "Well, thirty is fine, because the state says it's fine," or do we say, "Not in North Penn, thirty is not fine, twenty-five is better." This is the conversation that we hope to have, and not in any kind of way, but together, so that we can start to look at, instead of Band-Aiding, longer-term solutions for our kids. So I appreciate your time.
Hi, my name is Julianne Ramich, and I live at 306 Crestview Road in Lansdale. I'm also a mother of two children at NAP Elementary School, and I really love the NAP school environment, and I just wanna second what Christina said, but I also wanna also say that every year, at the end of the year, I am so proud of how the teachers work to end the year, and end the year strong, and I wanna honor them, but that, at that same moment, when I wanna express gratitude to teachers, the talk about class sizes for next year and the changes begin to happen, and it undermines then my ability to really be able to give the gratitude where gratitude is due. And I always get the same response, which is a lovely response. And I always get the same response, which is a lovely response from the principal, where she states that we're monitoring the guidelines and we're going to do the best we can, and I trust that that will happen. But I want to also bring up that guidelines are guidelines and not best practices, but it also doesn't factor in things that, that are so important to us at NAP. When we moved to the North Penn School District, we were very concerned about placing our children. My husband is an immigrant, and we wanted our children to have friends that were immigrants and that could, where they could develop a sense of appreciation for others and an appreciation of diversity. And we have been overwhelmed with that opportunity at NAP Elementary School. My children have a greater sense of the world and a great sense of empathy and a great appreciation for people who are different from them. And I, every day, I'm just, I'm so overwhelmed by that. My third grader is currently in a class that I think is appropriate, and she's been matched with English language learners, because her teacher is so encouraging of her, because she shows natural abilities to teach and guide others. And I'm so grateful for that opportunity for career development. But I worry that the guidelines don't factor in that there's more than just 26 bodies in a classroom. There's 26 different personalities and language abilities. And we need to be able to have classrooms that are appropriate and meet all of their needs. And so I want to end the year strong. I want to end the year with a great appreciation and reflect on the contributions of the teachers and how much my children have gained from that year. But I always start the summer off with that same fretting, and I, and I'm in that place again, and that's why I'm here. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is my first time ever doing this. And what brought me out here, believe it or not, and I'm sure everybody will agree, was when I saw Montgomery County Community College on my tax bill, so I'm going to start coming to these things. They want my $39. They ain't getting it. So anyway, what I'm here for, maybe, is this the appropriate place to talk about the laptop purchases? Is this correct?
Public comment, go ahead.
Okay. Here's my observations. I simply did this yesterday, and I just want clarification, because I'm doing the same thing with Monco, and I want my $39 back. In all the paperwork, I found 1.5 million for laptops. Then I found a $900,000 windfall. Then I found on the letter to the parents and the guardians that the laptops were going to grade six through nine. Then I found on North Penn, the laptops, 3,600 laptops are going to sixth, 11th, and 12th grade. Then I found the bid to Trinity III, I'm a great Googler, by the way, for $188,500. So how did we go from 1.5 million with a $900,000 windfall, with the lowest bid being $188,500 for laptops? I'm confused, and we went from sixth to ninth grade getting them to sixth, and 11th and 12th. So do we have like what we call those, what does Trump call those facts?
Well, how about, how about we get--
So do we have alternate facts here? I mean--
Well, how about we get you the, your answer first to that question?
Exactly.
Why don't you--
I'm just looking for clarification. Not a lot of detail, but, I mean, this is, this is just pure observation, and I'm wondering, if this is happening here with just the laptops, what else is going on in North Penn? What else is going on at Monco?
Well, how about we answer, how about we answer that question? Because honestly, I could tell you now, just, why don't you just Google any one of us, and you'll see 72 stories that have nothing to do with us. So why don't we get an answer for you?
Sure. And I'll cover this in tonight's budget presentation also, but let me start, you mentioned one--
I tried to read your budget. It was like--
Well, here, well, let's get clarity for you for this specific question.
Yep, stick around tonight. You'll leave with no question.
I really don't want to, but--
The $1.5 million, we do have $1.5 million in the 2017-18 budget for the purchase of Chromebooks for grades six, 11, and 12. It's roughly 3,600 Chromebooks. Okay, so it's $1.5 million budget. I believe there was a newspaper article that referenced some real estate tax assessment appeal settlements that we received in the current year. So that's one-time money that comes in, so we were planning on using that one-time money to fund the purchase of the Chromebooks in grade six, 11, and 12 next year. So that's, that's that part. The bid that you referenced, there was an additional purchase of Chromebooks this fiscal year. So that bid was awarded, I believe, at the April school board meeting. So that's not connected to the grades six, 11, and 12. Six, 11, and 12, that purchase won't be made until July. That'll be in our new fiscal year. So they're two separate purchases. In the current year also, we purchased, well, we didn't purchase, we leased, we did a three-year lease for four grades, I believe it was, for this year, correct? Yep, six, seven, eight, nine. So Chromebooks were purchased for four grades that are being used in grades six, seven, and eight, and ninth grade this year. So it's really three separate purchases. Two occurred this fiscal year, one will occur next fiscal year. I hope that helps.
It makes sense, but when you first pull something out like this, it doesn't--
You can answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Alicia G. I live at 102 Addison Lane, Lansdale, and I have two children at Bridle Path in fifth grade and one at Pendale in ninth grade. I will start with a brief story, which Dr. Dietrich has already heard, so this should not be a surprise, and I've wanted to give him the respect of hearing it first. Two days after Thanksgiving, I am a teacher in Abington, which we have full-day kindergarten, and I will say that it was worth every penny, and I think most of our taxpayers would say that, and I don't have kindergartners. But aside, two days after Thanksgiving, I teach in Abington, and I received a phone call from Annie Robbins, the assistant principal at Pendale, that there had been an incident with my ninth-grade daughter, Sierra. And Sierra is an honor roll student, student athlete, plays field hockey, track, has played basketball. Her teachers only say good things. She's never even had a detention. And in fact, she's actually, actually extremely shy and doesn't even like to stand up and speak in front of people. So she couldn't even be standing beside me right now. She'd be shaking. And so I received this phone call, and so like any mom, when the school calls and the number comes on there, you're kind of like, "Uh-oh, somebody's in the hospital or something's happening." And so I answer, because I don't get discipline phone calls. I've never gotten one discipline phone call for any of my children. So she says there's been an incident. Sierra was observed standing at her locker and, by a teacher, and she was pulled out of class by security. She was observed and under suspicion of popping pills. And so I immediately was like, "Okay," I continued to listen. And so Sierra was escorted by security from her classroom to the principal's office, no, to her locker, where it was searched, and then to the, and then back to her classroom. So it was found that she, after, that she was eating goldfish at her locker. So, I mean, to you, this may sound funny, but to my daughter, who was shaking, because she's a 14-year-old who was removed in front of her friends and humiliated and has never even had a detention, doesn't say boo to her teachers. When I get emails, it's, "Sierra is a pleasant student to have," and, and to me, it wasn't so funny. Because, as I explained to Dr. Dietrich when he met with us, this is a common occurrence, being a person of color in a community where, you know, you're a minority. And I will say this, my background is, my mother is white and my father is African-American, so my kids are very comfortable in many environments. My mother was shaking when I told her this story. It was, my daughter was picked up immediately by my husband, was very upset. In fact, no one even explained to her. She told them immediately it was goldfish. They searched her locker. She was sent back to class without an explanation and was told that the security guard as he walked away said, "I told you it wouldn't be anything." And that was it. Not even an apology. To the credit of the building principal, Dr. O'Sullivan, we met immediately the next day. As you can imagine, my husband and I were beyond, we were call MBC 10 upset. And he met with us immediately, and he was very sympathetic, and really just apologized, because there was nothing he could say. I, being a teacher and understanding education and also being in a supervisory capacity, that I knew that that was not even the way you would handle a child who had supposedly been popping pills. Because the first thing that you should be worried about is their well-being. So I looked up your school board policy, and of course, it read that an administrator was supposed to get, get her and was supposed to take her to the nurse's office. The administrator, Ms. Robbins, who contacted me, told me she was in an observation. That's what she told me that day. I was in an observation, so security was sent to her classroom. I'm saying this to say, not just to tell you a horrible story, but it is a story that you need to hear to understand the following. Following that, I met with Dr. Dietrich. We met, and I felt like we had a candid conversation, and he heard what I was saying. I was extremely disappointed in how Ms. Robbins handled the situation, and I felt like, especially since she did not even follow the board policy, that she needed to be held accountable. My daughter was going to be held accountable if she indeed had drugs in that locker, and yet she had goldfish crackers and was just trying to get a snack because she had a long day. So she wasn't held accountable, as I would expect, because we all, you know, I imagine that, I did ask Dr. Dietrich to have the conversation with her, and she called and she, I, to be honest, we were not ready to speak to her, because we weren't. In addition to that, I'm leaving out the teacher who actually observed it, to say that there were two adults who made a poor choice in this situation, because the teacher didn't even walk up and say, "Hey, Sierra, what do you have there?" So I ask you to put yourself in my position and ask yourself, if you got that phone call home, how would you feel? And then you're a person of color in the situation that we are in general in our country and how we feel. We feel attacked in many, in many ways. Following this, there were three diversity meetings that were held. My understanding is they were going to be held. I attended two of those meetings, the one at Pendale and the one at Pembroke. I met a lot of wonderful people, not just people of color, but people that were interested in diversity in general. People like the person that just spoke that had children that were immigrants and went to NAP and talked about the wonderful, what a wonderful place it was. And I will say, my kids have been in school since kindergarten, and in general, I've been the home and school president, I've been active, we've had a good experience, we've had wonderful teachers, we've had good principals. But this was eye-opening for me, because it's easy to become safe and feel like, well, your child can't be profiled, or your child can't be treated a certain way. Dr. Dietrich immediately asked me, was, why do you think it was because she was a person of color? And I said, "Well, after having many conversations," because I'm, I talked to a lot of moms in the community, having been the home and school president, and, and I know a lot of people, I started asking people, "Well, how do they handle discipline? I don't have discipline issues, so what are the things?" Well, people were telling me stories that were much more than this, where their child was picked up by the guidance counselor or the administrator or called to the nurse's office. But my child was eating goldfish at her locker, and no one could just walk up to her and say, "What are you eating?" No one could treat her with enough kindness or respect or empathy, as the person two people ago spoke, to ask her just, "What are you eating?" She's not a particularly scary-looking 14-year-old. She doesn't look like she could harm you, so there's nothing that was quite intimidating about her. So I'm not really sure why those things didn't happen. And to be honest, I think Dr. Dietrich would say this, he didn't know why, and neither Dr. O'Sullivan. It was just a mistake. So I attended, attended the diversity meetings, and I don't know if anyone here had an opportunity. I think there was one board member at one of the meetings. And so if you were, you heard a lot of similar stories. A lot of similar stories. Stories from people who didn't speak English particularly well, who felt disenfranchised. Stories from people who were Jewish, who felt that their child had had horrible incidences, and it was just swept under the carpet, which is how ultimately I felt. I didn't really want revenge, but I wanted her, I wanted the administrator held accountable. And I wanted something to come out of it. And so having been to the diversity meetings and hearing many of the stories, which I'm, you heard the stories, I mean, I can't even repeat all of them, but there were ones where there were blatant things that occurred in the schools, that were blatant slurs, things that happened, ways people were treated, and it was just swept under the carpet or made, the parent was made to feel like it was their child's fault, or that they somehow, the child did something to make it happen to them. It was very eye-opening. And so some questions came out of that meeting. I specifically, I think that Ms. Holben, am I pronouncing it correctly? You probably recognize me, because I was pretty vocal, because it was pretty fresh for me. It's still not, it's still not gone, and that's November. I asked questions about staffing. We have one African-American, one person-of-color teacher at Bridle Path Elementary, and we have, since my daughter was in kindergarten, and she's in ninth grade. So what is happening with staffing would be one of my first questions. Are we doing anything as other districts begin to do? I mean, I teach in Abington, so I know what we do. I know the things that we do to recruit minority staff members, to have our staff be a reflection of our student population. So what are we doing to have our staff be a reflection of our student population? Because it's important. It's important for conversations. It's important for perspective among teachers. It's important so that children look across the room and see, or look across the building or cross Field Day and see someone that looks like them. What are we doing about training? I was told that there's a task force or a committee, and the teachers are trained by Barbara Moore Harris. After speaking to a parent that was on the committee and part of the conversations, she said, "You know, a lot of the committee's members would come back frustrated and say, 'There's so many things to do in the building that when, after the training happens among that committee and they go back, they don't have time to work.'" The principal say, "Well, you have five minutes at the beginning of the meeting." Five minutes at the beginning of the meeting does not begin to address the issues that children are facing. And teachers, even young teachers coming out of college, are not prepared to even teach children who are dealing with these kinds of issues. So ongoing training is important, but there doesn't seem to be a district-wide comprehensive effort. So I'm wondering, beyond my staffing question, will there be, or is there going to be, a district-wide comprehensive effort to train our teachers in this area?
I can answer that, go on.
Sure.
We do have a program in place to train people who do make everyone's role. Our community, so that it reflects exactly what you just asked for. This is not a unique problem for any one school district. I'm in a doctoral cohort with 72 other administrators who work in the same, same situation, where you have a workforce that, quite frankly, doesn't always reflect the community, because that's not the opportunities we have. That, you know, if people don't apply, we don't have that choice, and that's one of the bigger challenges we face. So we started a recruitment program a few years ago, just for that reason. Go out to the colleges, recruit people that we could. Colleges do require this particular subject, whether it's English as a second language or diversity in the, in the student population. That's a required class in most graduate programs now. So, I mean, I know that, because I've been in graduate school now for 14 years, and I can tell you, I've taken at least five courses on this, so--
So you're acknowledging that there's a problem? Are you saying that the district doesn't have more to do?
Well, no, I, I would tell you, it's just, look, I can't, just, no. I'm telling you, I think the district has a long way to go with this issue. I think that all school districts do. It's not unique to just us. It is a societal problem, too, because as you said, you go to the diversity meetings and you hear some of the issues that have come up in schools, and some of that stuff, you know, whatever happens to those kids when they go home-- you know, whatever happens to those kids when they go home and they get their attitude from their parents and their family and they bring it to school, we have to deal with those challenges. And some of them are overwhelming. Not saying we're not going to try, I'm not going to say we're never going to, you know, we're going to give up on it. Some of it is very difficult to deal with and quite frankly, if somebody had a solution, they'd be millionaires because they could sell the program to school districts. There's not a lot of programs out there that really deal with this thing so comprehensively as you would like to see it. And I'm in it, I'm telling you, I'm in these graduate programs. There's not a lot out there. There is a lot of effort and a desire and a motivation to want to deal with all these issues that come up as a diverse community of 140,000 people with what, how many languages do we have here? Seventy-six?
Something like that.
So here's the thing, you don't have to convince me that it's a problem because I'm clearly biracial, I live the problem, right? So you're preaching to the choir, truly.
I know, I know.
But I am saying, and it doesn't really matter if it's unique or not unique, it's an issue in our district. So it can be unique or not unique, it doesn't matter if it's a problem across the world. It's an issue in our district that I'm asking my elected representatives to address.
And that's what I'm saying to you. I appreciate that effort because what you're doing is, again, making everyone aware of the problems and the challenges that the school district faces, some of which we have dealt with for many years and I've been on the board 20 years and I've heard this issue come up many times for many different reasons. And it is a challenge because as we put these programs in place to try to, like you said, professionally train our staff on these issues, it still doesn't go far enough.
Well, I'm even saying that the program as it is, is clearly not working. Because how did that happen to my daughter?
I totally agree with you. I sympathize with that.
The program as it is, number one, I can tell you.
It's a challenge. It should have never happened to your daughter. They should have taken the courage and as a teacher in a classroom, that's who I am, I would have walked up to that student and said, "What you doing?" I think that would have been a far better, look, I have a concern for the student and their well-being. That's my job. So to go up and take that few minutes to say, "What's going on?"
Beyond the teacher, you had an administrator.
Oh, understand.
At the top level.
That requires me to make that phone call to get them involved.
Who then went three steps beyond that. So.
I totally agree with you.
That's an administrator in your building.
You had a problem that should have never happened.
Who also was not even held accountable for her actions.
Well, no, you don't know that. You don't know that. Okay, please, we can't talk about personnel matters.
You're right, I know you can't talk about personnel issues.
But you don't know how, what we're going to, how we're going to handle this later.
You're right.
And that's why I asked Dr. Dietrich a couple of questions while you were talking because I didn't have all the facts.
But neither, I mean, like I said, this is not really about my daughter's specific issue. I told you that to say why I'm passionate about it. I can tell you specifically one issue with your training. It is voluntary. The teachers can volunteer to be on the, I can't remember what the diversity, cultural competency training. So let me ask you, how many racists do you know are going to raise their hand and say, "I have biases." Not even just racist, I'm just going to say in general, people who have biases, because really, a lot of people, I have biases, everyone has biases in some way, even if you don't want to admit it. So how many people do you know say, "I have a bias, I'd like to go through cultural competency training." When I emailed my principal and said, "Who are the teachers that volunteered for this?" And he sent me the list, I thought, "Okay, some of the best teachers in the school, you mean?" Like, I mean, it was not even a surprise who was on the list.
Well, how about I do this? Because I don't want to, I understand that there's an issue.
So I'm just saying, I'm saying that it's something that needs to be asked for.
Would you agree, as an educator and as someone who has a personal state, because you've experienced this firsthand, would you agree to be part of that effort when we expand it, our efforts to include more parents on these committees to study this issue, to help us develop those things?
I mean, of course I would agree. I will tell you, having spoken to a parent that was on it, that she felt it wasn't going far enough and that's why I'm coming to the board and saying, that's a concern. That it's something that maybe, I'm saying that it's something the board needs a hand in and looking at because it's important. You are in a district that is diverse. I mean, we just had a parent talk about how diverse NAP Elementary is.
We are.
Not just dealing with African-Americans or, I mean, in general, even the ESL population. At the very first diversity meeting, one of the first things that was said is you reached out to people of diverse population and how did you do it? And this wasn't even asked by me, this was asked by someone else. And there were so many people that did not know about the meeting and someone stood up and said, "Well, when you were giving out those Chromebooks, you made sure you got the message to us." I mean, we got email after email and we got flyers and letters and there was also, it was on North Penn TV. Someone looked on the website and it wasn't even on the website. The diversity meeting was not even on that day, it was on that night. Immediately the next day, it was on the website. But that night, it was not on the website. Do you remember that, Ms. Holben?
It was there, but it was not on the calendar, it was on the front page.
It wasn't, we were looking at our phones like, "Where is it on the website?" So that in itself, I mean, I'm just saying to you, there's work to be done in our district, is what I'm saying. So I asked questions about staffing, I asked questions about training. I also specifically at that meeting said, "You brought us out, you brought parents out for three meetings, we want feedback. We want information." That, the last one was in March, so I'm hoping that we hear something soon because we haven't even gotten minutes from it or anything that would say, "This is what came out of the meeting and this is how we're hoping to move forward." So, I mean, I asked specifically for those questions. I'm hoping that I don't walk away and feel lip service, because that's how I felt when I was sitting there initially with my daughter. I want to feel like I'm a valued member of this community and so are all of the other people of different backgrounds. Because as I said, there were people who were just non-English speakers there, there were people who were Jewish there, there were people who were Caucasian but had children of color who had concerns. So there were all realms of people that opened my mind and I, to the things that other people were going through that maybe weren't even in my situation. So I'm hoping that what this does is at least start the conversation. I appreciate that there was a board member at one of the meetings so that they could kind of hear firsthand that this isn't just something I'm making up in my head. There were people with real concerns and real problems. And after that meeting, some of the moms started just talking and saying, you know, "It feels good to have someone else to at least say, 'My child's experiencing this, not even in the same school, not even with the same teacher, but yet some of the same common things are happening.'" And it speaks to an overall issue that we have, that we feel is important enough to at least say in front of the board. So I said I would come and say these things because it's important not just to me or my family, but to many families in our district. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Holben, I would like to see what efforts you, first off, if there are some outcomes from those meetings.
Absolutely.
And then maybe at the next ECP meeting, you could give a briefing on the trainings that we get for our staff members.
Absolutely, we could, without a doubt.
And also the efforts to recruit and how we've taken that very serious.
And we are in the process of, we've been meeting the last, I think we've met twice since those meetings to go through the parent feedback and start trying to look at what are the common themes that we're seeing and be able to get that communicated out. So we're hoping to get that out soon as well.
And I'd like to apologize to your daughter, I'm sorry that she was treated that way. I'm sure that's.
But I appreciate that.
I'm sorry too.
That's a tough one.
I appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Shanika Tan. I live at 1199 Columbia Avenue. I too was a parent that attended the diversity meeting. The reason that I attended that meeting was because my son was coming home telling me that he was being harassed and bullied by his teacher. I had a meeting with the teacher and one of the issues that she brought to me was that my son, he was supposed to be in challenged math. She didn't put him in challenged, she felt as though she didn't want to put him up where he belonged because she felt as though my child was emotional. Since the diversity meeting, there were more problems. My son started to, since I had that meeting with the teacher, my son started to come home and tell me things like his teacher hated him, he felt like she was bullying, intimidating him, to a point where he asked me one morning, like, "Mom, is my teacher going to hurt me?" I did file a complaint with Ms. McHugh. I haven't heard anything back as of yet, but being African-American, now when I go to the school, because everyone knows, I guess the teachers talk and they know what's going on, when I go to the school, it's so cold. Like, people are very rude to me, ignorant, even to a point where I park my car is a problem. I feel like, you know, my son, I asked for my son to be moved from his classroom, which he was. This teacher, she still continues to come to work, she still gets to teach in the classroom. My son is being thrown around. At this point, my son, he's in fourth grade math, there's only, she's the only fourth grade math teacher at the school. My son is now off somewhere with a teacher doing math, which is, I think is not fair to him. I was told that, you know, he has to wait to be put up to his higher math when he gets to fifth grade, which he should have been, this, I mean, all of this was going on around January, February, he should have been put up. As a parent of an African-American son, I think that if it was a Caucasian child, he would have been put where he was belonged. My son is being held back because of someone thinking that he's emotional. That doesn't, him being emotional doesn't say that he can't do the work and it's not fair to my child. So, I mean, with the diversity meeting, like Alicia said, like, we need some training. I don't think it's fair that this teacher is still there. The things she was saying to my son, like, were harsh. She called my son a liar. Like, you don't speak to a child like this. In the meeting, I brought up to her, like, it's other words you can use instead of liar, you can use like telling a story, you know, "That's not true." She said to me, "Oh, well, I don't know anything about that. Well, I'll look into it." But I was trying to explain to the teacher, you know, in the meeting, you know, when you speak to, you have children there of all nationalities, you need, as an educator, you should know better and what words you should be using. But, I mean, at this point, it's like, I don't even want my son in the school district no more. I'm so upset. I know that my son, he's lately been acting out, he doesn't want to come to school anymore. It's just a lot going on, a lot going on. And this lady, she's, once again, my son has been moved out of the classroom, he's not doing math with the other children, he's been held back. And this teacher, she still comes to work and she still gets to work and all the teachers know, because my son has expressed to me that, you know, other teachers has said to him that she's mean, but no one is speaking up. And then when I go to the school and I speak up, it's like, I'm wrong. So, I mean, I just want some, something, something needs to be done, the training. Me and my husband, we had a meeting with the teacher, the administrator, and it was me, my husband, administrator, and she started screaming at me in the meeting. And the administrator immediately stopped the meeting and, "How do you do that? I mean, you're being unprofessional to us as parents, so it's no telling how she's acting in the classroom." So, I mean, with this diversity meeting, I mean, something really needs to be done. I mean, you said that it took over 20 years or you've been doing this for 20 years. I mean, I think 20 years is well enough to start getting things fixed around here.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate that. I don't think it's an indictment of our full staff, but.
Hi, my name is Becky Chang. I live at 120 Hartwood Drive. I teach at Wissickin High School and my husband, Dan Chang, is a teacher at Plymouth White Marsh I am a Wissickin graduate and I attended full-day kindergarten back in 1987. My husband, Dan, is a North Penn graduate. He had to go to a full-day kindergarten program at a private school and then he transferred into North Penn School District. We have two children aged four and two. We moved four years ago and one of our biggest wants in finding a home was to be in a good school district for our kids. We were considering great local school districts, Wissickin, Colonial, Upper Dublin, but we bought a home in North Penn School District because it is a great district and the homes are affordable. With that being said, I didn't realize that there was only a half-day kindergarten program here at the time. When I found this out, I did some digging. I spoke with a friend who teaches kindergarten in a half-day program in another district. I spoke with other friends whose kids have gone through either half-day or full-day kindergarten programs as well. I attended the ECP meeting last night to hear about the options that North Penn was putting together. I was a little disappointed to hear that most of the options were geared towards struggling students and wouldn't necessarily include all students. In addition, it was eye-opening to hear from parents who had already sent their kids through North Penn kindergarten and were somewhat disappointed with the experience. So much is jam-packed into just a few short hours per day that the kids felt as though they didn't have friends and that the school experience was overwhelming instead of an exciting way to start the learning experience. All of the transitions that a five-year-old has to go through seems just mean. They have to get used to rules, teachers and friends at their North Penn schools, get on a bus and then go to, get used to a different set of rules, teachers and friends at their daycares. This is all very discouraging. Because of it, we're on waiting lists for Catholic schools in the area. I'd rather my kids attend a full-day program where they can enjoy their lunch, recess and friends. This has been a huge struggle for us as parents as we are obviously public school advocates. I truly believe that there's no better education than in a public school, especially in our area. But my kids will probably begin their schooling in Catholic or private schools, which seems as though it's very common for families in this district. In fact, I learned last night that there is an approximately 12% increase in the number of first graders over kindergartners in the North Penn School District. Shouldn't that figure in itself say something to all of us? In addition, it was very disheartening as a new member of the North Penn School District family to hear approximately 20 parents get up and speak out about their desire for full-day kindergarten. And then I heard a letter read from a school board member in response. The letter was written by a resident who did not want their taxes raised. The letter didn't seem necessarily to be in response to the kindergarten issue and clearly she had read this letter many times before, as she had stated. The one letter seemed to be a big reason that none of the options are going to be discussed any further. I understand that full-day kindergarten is a huge financial expense, but I'm concerned about my children and I hope that you are as well, along with all of the children in the school district that you represent. So therefore, my husband, Dan, and I would like to strongly encourage you to take a very close look at the full-day kindergarten option and to consider all of the voices that you heard last night. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Michelle Rup. I live in Upper Gwinnett. And I actually would like to echo the sentiments of a couple of other parents that just spoke earlier, a couple of moms. We met at the diversity meeting. And I have to tell you, I too am very disappointed. I have a 12-year-old daughter who has been in the district since kindergarten. My daughter is of Syrian and Palestinian heritage half. And she was unfortunate enough to be born with a disability. We have had numerous struggles within this district, starting in full-day kindergarten. She was able to receive full-day kindergarten because of her disability. Our kindergarten teacher told us that. Our kindergarten teacher told us that, um, we wanted her to be there and she needed to prove that she was able to keep up. I have pictures that were taken because that teacher retired that year and so parents came in and took pictures of the kids in the classroom. I have proof that my child and three other children were stuck together in the back of the classroom, as far away from the teacher as they could possibly be. I had a director of special education tell me that IEP meetings were not a place for compromise, that I needed to go to mediation. In kindergarten, I found an attorney to advise me about what I needed to do for my child so that she could have access to education in this district. I've been advocating hard for 12 years, for, well, six, seven years. I still have issues. I have an IEP that has not been followed this year. My child doesn't have the differentiated education that she's supposed to have. She had spinal fusion surgery in October and I had two assistants for her, that her best friend was calling me once a week, telling me that the assistants were dragging her from the classroom by her arms. When questioned, the teachers didn't know where she was, why she was removed from the classroom, how long she was out of the classroom, and what was happening to her when she was out of the classroom. My daughter has language delays, so when I ask her what's happening, she can't tell Parents are not permitted to observe in the classroom and see what's going on. There's a very restrictive visitation policy in this district. I refused to sign my IEP until I got visitation in it. So when I observed in the classroom, I observed for 90 minutes in a co-taught classroom with a math intervention specialist. I watched the co-teacher and the intervention specialist sit for nearly 90 minutes on a window ledge while the general ed teacher was teaching. So when we look at the salaries that we're paying, there were two salaries that sat for the majority of 90 minutes. The co-teacher was on her cellphone playing. When I've asked what's happening to, um, make sure that my daughter had access to education in the classroom this year, the teacher told me, well, when she's willing to participate. Is that okay? Is that really okay? We're in a district where we're talking about inclusion. We talk about how we do inclusion and how important that is. I don't see it. I haven't seen it. I was part of a group that had, was part of a pilot program for the first three years, first, second, and third grade, where we were teaching teachers how to include kids in the general education curriculum. Third grade, I sat in IEP meetings where when I would talk about the things that my daughter's capable of doing, by the way, she followed the election, she watches the news, she knows what's going on in the world, but I was told that my daughter really didn't seem to know what was going on. And when I would talk about the things that she could do, like, uh, in fourth grade, she taught herself algebra with an iPad app in a day while she was only allowed to do single-digit addition and subtraction in the general ed classroom. The teachers would snort and roll their eyes, shake their head, not really listen to me. Two years ago, Jenna Rufus started a special ed and inclusion task force. I volunteered as a parent to participate. I co-cheered a committee for two years, had teachers on my committee. I was not permitted to schedule meetings for our committee. I had to go through someone. I was not permitted to use district classrooms or district meeting rooms for those meetings. I came up with the idea to make the inclusion quilts that are in your elementary schools. I had a committee to help me. I did it. Nobody would come to committee meetings. I had over 300 quilt squares that a friend of mine, who doesn't even have children in the district, and my mother helped me cut. I assembled all of those kits with materials for the kids to put together those quilts. I went out and bought the material, spent $1,000 out of my own pocket to do it. Okay? I was reimbursed, but I did this, I did all of this work on my own. I would stay up until 1 o'clock in the morning to do it. When I delivered the supplies to the classrooms, nobody knew they were coming. And I got a really wonderful letter from a teacher telling me that I just wasn't really, because I'm not a teacher, I wasn't smart enough to figure out how to put those kits together and they didn't have what they needed. Not thank you. And when I talked about the fact that, as a parent, I didn't feel welcome to participate in a committee that I offered to help with, I was unceremoniously dismissed from the committee. Not thank you, but you know what, maybe you should do something else. So, as a parent in this district of a diverse learner, I don't feel welcome. And it's really frustrating. It's frustrating to hear other parents, we met, we talked after the diversity meeting. We talked about the challenges that many of us see. And I will tell you that as a parent of a child with a disability in this district, I'm not the only one that has this issue. I talk to parents every day. I heard another story tonight about a parent of a child in my elementary school who is having similar issues to what I'm having right now and has been having those issues all year. I think we really need to look long and hard. And I will tell you that the challenges that I struggle with are part of the reason that I chose to run for school director. Because we have to ask difficult questions and we've got a lot of difficult decisions to make. And the budget that you're looking at, we really have to look long and hard at it. And I think full-day kindergarten may well be a good idea, but we've got to look at that budget and quite honestly, we've got to make what we have right now work, because if we can't make that work, how are we going to make full-day kindergarten work? And with that, I'll shut up.
My name is Jonathan Casa at 139 Gwynmont Drive, North Wales, Pennsylvania, Montgomery Township. And, uh, just want to thank you for the time and energy as a board that you put in, listening to the, uh, community members and our fellow neighbors who are here tonight and what an excellent resource that is. I really, I had no prepared remarks tonight, but was moved by one or two statements that I'll be as brief as possible. Uh, just want to help clarify and add some context, uh, to some of the experiences that I've observed, uh, with two children in the district in middle school and, and elementary right now. Yeah, just following up on the last statement, uh, I think it's very clear, though, that certainly our district, as proud as, uh, we are of its accomplishments, I certainly hope that, uh, the measurement of the quality of service and education that we provide, that it's measured by how we educate those who are the most difficult to educate, or who may seem like the most challenging, but are still as gifted and talented as any students in this district. Now, the one issue that first moved me to speak, go Jaguars for our NAP, yeah. Absolutely love our NAP experience. Uh, five years, uh, six years for my son going through NAP. Echo all those comments. Uh, what's interesting is, three years ago, two years ago, Groundhog Day, uh, the exact same issues are being discussed about class size. Uh, what I find interesting is that by having guidelines, which aren't really part of a policy set in place, find it very easy to move the goalposts when it's appropriate to fit what the school and/or the board and the budget needs, as opposed to what our children and our students need to succeed. It's a little crass, but I'll still remind you of what I said before, maybe some of you will remember. There are guidelines for the Mount of E. coli that should be in our hamburgers and our meat. That doesn't mean it's acceptable and you will feed that to your children or mine. I expect our education to come up to a much higher standard than the shifting guidelines we have for our schools. One of the other issues that really got, got me thinking was the diversity issues and the experience, uh, that, that the parents have shared with their, uh, stories, and very real stories that I take at face value, um, and appreciate how the board reacted to that with apologies. I still find that there, there are areas in, in my line of work, there, uh, there's implicit bias training, there's fair and impartial policing and work for security officers and those who work as school resource officers and in a K-12 system. The U.S. Department of Justice has a program that's already been certified by the Cops Office. I'm more than happy to discuss afterwards. One of my good friends in Chicago evaluated the program. It's specifically to deal with the implicit bias that teachers, administrators, that we all have, in making sure that we have a better culture and school environment. So I, I just want to make sure I, I offer that, um, and something maybe that, that we can look into during your studies. One of the other issues, uh, in, in my profession alone, I have over 5,000, uh, campus public safety officers on 170 campuses nationwide. Training is very important. And I, I think we could all agree, there's nothing like higher education for having to tackle diversity issues. There's a lot of heated debate, which is very good. And some of those issues remind me of what's being discussed today. There's one thing to have a training, but what we preach is practice. Day in and day out, it has to be a culture of safety, a culture of acceptance and diversity, just like there's a culture of excellence for our academics. One of the things that worries me most, as I'll shift to my final point, is that we're not proactive enough as a school district. I, I'll be quite honest, I, I had, you know, some chills when the story was being told about, uh, a student and a parent calling up, because what it reminded me of, in my experience so many times, is a victim advocate in dealing with victims of sexual assault and dealing with issues on the national level to address that with policy. I don't know what the policies really are in dealing with Title IX issues in K-12, but if you haven't had a problem yet, you will. And it's going to cost all of us when you do. Not only is reputation, but in legal bills, it's a risk that we have to manage. I worked closely with the Office of Civil Rights at the, uh, U.S. Department of Higher Education. Though there may be changes there, those changes aren't going to be fast enough that we can keep our head in the sand and think that when a sexual assault or harassment happens of a student, and I guarantee with the number of students we have that it's happening, that we'd better be prepared to deal with it. So that comes down to being proactive, whether it's full-day kindergarten, having, uh, uh, high school repairs, planning proactively for the pension crisis, air conditioning at elementary schools, class size, diversity training. Again and again, we're treating symptoms instead of diagnosing the problem, having adult conversation with the rest of our neighbors about it and advancing with a common goal and vision in place. And so, thank you once again for having this opportunity for us to have such a robust conversation. I look forward to continuing that with you and my neighbors in the months ahead.
My name is Thomas Mancini. I live at 809 Patterson Drive in Upper Gwinnett. Uh, my question is really centered around, uh, the budget, since that's on the agenda tonight, and I guess it's really directed to Mr. Scrocky at this point. So, in terms of the PISERS contributions for the district, my understanding is that for the 1718 budget, that number hovers around $40 million. Do we have projections on what that number's going to be over the next three to five years?
We have a projection on the rate. Uh, PISERS actually stopped doing rates beyond the next four years, so we do anticipate a 32.57% employer share next year for the 1718 year. And that's supposed to go up somewhere between 34% and 35% over the next couple of years and kind of plateau there and pretty much stay there, we think, for about the next 20 years, even though PISERS did stop doing projections long-term like they used to. Uh, the last time they went out for a long-term projection, again, it showed that the rate would stay above 30% for a very long period of time. So to put that into perspective in terms of dollars, the 1718 fiscal year, for example, it's about a $3 million increase to our pension obligation. Half of that's reimbursed by the state, but on the expenditure side, it's about a $3 million increase. I would expect roughly a $3 million increase each year for the next couple of years and then pretty much level off at that figure. Um, and we do have reserves, we do have a PISERS rate stabilization fund. The board had the foresight to set that fund up several years ago and presently has about 14.4 million in it. And in working with the finance committee, we do have a plan to start utilizing that PISERS rate stabilization fund to lessen the impact of that two, three million dollar increase that we're going to be experiencing for each in the next couple of years.
All right, thank you. And then once again, thanks to the board for their work with the budget. It's a, uh, difficult task, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward with our agenda tonight. Uh, Mr. Scrocky, you're going to take the lead on this. Well, yes, to the recommended approval of the minutes of the April 20th action meeting as circulated.
Motion by...
motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mr. D'Azio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Before we move on with the superintendent's, uh, report and then the presentation, I would like to say that I, I know we heard a lot about, uh, our staff not up to the task to deal with some of these issues and I don't think that reflects all of our staff. I think, do think that we have a long way to go. I think that we do need to address a lot of these issues. And I think we have the people in place to do it, so I have a lot of confidence in Mrs. McQ and Dr. Dietrich and Dr. Holden to, you heard the complaints, you've heard some of the comments. I hope that you do what you can to fix them.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move forward. Mr. Scrock, you have a presentation for us on the final budget. I believe there's copies in the back.
Dr. McQ is going to hand out copies of the presentation and the presentation will be posted on our website tomorrow morning.
How about we make the recommendation first, then you do your presentation, so...
I recommend the adoption of the 201718 proposed final budget resolution in the amount of $252,508,654, including a property tax increase of 1.99% per PDE Form 2028 and authorization to publish notice to adopt the final budget in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code and Act per item BA 2A through double A.
Motion by Mr. Schelling, second by Mrs. Prokowsky.
Comments or questions? If not, I'd like to take Mr. Scrocky's presentation next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to the school board and the administration and the community to be able to present the 201718 proposed final budget. Uh, this budget is being presented after about four months' worth of work with the finance committee at our monthly meetings and also, in addition to that, we had three special finance committee meetings solely for the purpose of the budget. So we've had a number of meetings over the past several months. The budget that's being presented tonight includes, as Dr. Dietrich just mentioned in the resolution, a 1.99% tax increase. And just a reminder for the community, back in November of 2016, the board did pass a resolution indicating its intent not to exceed the Act 1 index for the 1718 fiscal year. Uh, the Act 1 index for the 1718 fiscal year is 2.5%. So what that means is, with the Act 1 index, if you don't apply for exceptions, 2.5% would be the maximum allowable tax increase permitted by law. The recommendation tonight is for a 1.99% tax increase. In terms of what that means with the overall budget, when you balance out the revenues and expenditures, uh, it actually leaves us with a $5 million deficit for the 1718 year. And there is an asterisk besides that, and I'll explain that in a moment. But with a $5 million deficit, clearly we have a structural imbalance in the budget. We are spending more money than what we are bringing in for the 1718 year. Uh, a $5 million deficit is the result of a 2.86% increase in our expenditures. And we'll get into some of the major driving factors of those expenditures in a moment. The reason for the asterisk for the $5 million deficit is something we actually discussed earlier, dealing with Chromebooks. We do have an anticipated purchase of $1.5 million for Chromebooks for grades 6, 11, and 12 for the 1718 year that basically we're going to pull from our, our fund balance, a one-time purchase, and we're going to match that up against some of the one-time money we brought in this past year from the real estate tax assessment appeals. So it'll be an outright purchase via a competitive bid. It will not be a lease arrangement. We do plan on making the purchase in... We do plan on making the purchase in July. We actually plan on letting out the bid later this week and asking the board for approval at its June school board meeting once the budget is adopted. So on an operational basis, the deficit for the upcoming year is $3.5 million when you factor out the one-time purchase for the Chromebooks. That represents about a 2.25% increase in expenditures. Now, the budget timeline, I just want to review that very quickly. We did have a special Finance Committee meeting last Thursday evening, and much of the same content that we're discussing tonight was presented at that Finance Committee meeting. Tonight, we are asking for your approval of the proposed final budget. It's really the first step in a two-step process. The second step will be asking for approval of the final budget on June 15th, okay? And we're presenting it tonight at the Board Work Session because 30 days have to transpire between the proposed final budget and the final budget. In previous years, we had a three-step process, and that was because the board did not pass a resolution indicating it would not exceed the index. We actually had a three-step process. We had a preliminary budget, a proposed final budget, and a final budget. This year, we only need to go through the proposed final budget and final budget because of that resolution that was passed by the board in November not to exceed the Act 1 index. So a quick snapshot of what our budget looks like for the upcoming year, it's a $252 million expenditure budget, and that represents a $7 million increase in expenditures over the current fiscal year. Again, including the Chromebooks, that's about a 2.86% increase, leaving us with a deficit of $5 million with the recommended 1.99% tax increase. So, just for sake of argument, if a question would be asked, well, what would it take to actually balance the budget, completely balance the budget through an additional tax increase? That answer is a little bit over 4%. So a 4.06% tax increase would balance the budget, although that is not permitted by law. Again, 2.5% is a maximum amount permitted by law. So let's stack up our revenues and expenses for the 1718 fiscal year versus the 1617 year. Our revenues are projected to go up $5.3 million with that tax increase, and our expenditures are projected to go up $7 million. Our deficit for the upcoming year would be slightly under $5 million, and that compares to the $3.3 million deficit that was budgeted for the current fiscal year. Now, while we did have a $3.3 million budget for the current fiscal year, we're actually projecting to finish the year with roughly a $6 million surplus at the end of the year. And that really stems from three factors. The first factor, I alluded to just a moment ago, with the Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeal settlements that we were able to finalize this fiscal year through the Montgomery County Mediation Program through the Board of Assessment, we did settle a large number of school district-initiated tax assessment appeal on commercial properties where the value of the property, the value of the assessment, was under where it should have been. So through court proceedings, we were able to increase the assessed value of the commercial properties. Some of these appeals dated back several years, so the school district was able to close out these cases and generate roughly $5 to $6 million in additional revenue, one-time revenue this fiscal year by closing out the Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeals, and that the payments came in from those commercial properties that were subject to appeal. Second factor is from a bond refinancing that we did this year. It saved about $500,000 to the school district. The third factor, why we feel we'll end this fiscal year not with a $3.3 million deficit, but a $6 million surplus, is what's called PlanCon money. That's reimbursement from the state for prior construction projects. There was a backlog at the state, and the state in previous years didn't have the money to pay us our backlog. So finally, the state actually borrowed money to be able to pay us that backlog, and we received about $1.1 million this fiscal year in unbudgeted PlanCon money. So when you add all that up, we do expect to finish the fiscal year in a $6.6 million surplus situation, even though it was a budgeted deficit.
What would the, did you add all those up to come up with the revenue for 1617?
For 1617, we provide monthly projection reports to our Finance Committee. What you're seeing on the screen now, Mr. Kerr, is our budgeted figures. These are initial budgeted figures. We do provide the Finance Committee with a monthly projection report, and our latest report that we shared with the Finance Committee is showing roughly a $6 million surplus at the end of the fiscal year that we're projecting.
So that's an additional $9 million?
About a $9 million swing altogether, correct. About $7 million of that swing, roughly, when you factor in the removal of our escrow from the assessment appeals, about $7 million out of that $9 million swing comes from the settlement of the Real Estate Tax Assessment Appeals, including the escrow portion. Mr. O'Donnell, you had a question?
No, I was trying to get him to press his microphone. Thank you.
So about a $9 million swing, correct. And the swing is all one-time money. It was all unanticipated money. We are not expecting any of this to reoccur. The PlanCon money has been paid to us now, that won't reoccur. We're finished with refinancing our bonds, there's nothing else eligible to refinance at this point in time, and once the assessment appeals are settled, there's no additional money coming in. Now, we do have assessment appeals that are still outstanding. We do have money in the budget next year, expecting more appeals to settle, but certainly not to the tune of $7 million when you factor in the escrow portion.
Steve, one quick question. With the tax money normate at the end of the year, we say we're going to put it in the stablest rate, the PISERS State Stabilization Fund, Capital Reserve, or the self-insurance. Do you, have you had any discussions on where that's going to go?
We've had some preliminary discussions, and we'll also present at the next Finance Committee meeting, but we do anticipate a recommendation of reserving some additional funds for the PISERS rate stabilization fund, roughly $2 to $2.5 million additional this fiscal year would be our recommendation. We'll discuss more at the May Finance Committee meeting, but we are anticipating, based on that $6 million surplus, that we would have flexibility to assign more money for that PISERS rate stabilization fund.
What about self-insurance?
We have $2.7 million right now assigned for self-insurance, and we feel that fund is stable. We've had a couple of good years of medical expenses, and we don't feel anything beyond $2.7 million is necessary right now for an additional assignment.
Okay, then there's going to be a couple million left over. What about our schools? I know we have our short-term list, and I think we have just about $1 million left in there. Have you talked to Support Services, to Scott? Is there any major projects, or maybe we can start doing something piecemeal, piecemeal, on some small pieces at the high school?
We think we have about $1.5 million remaining in our Capital Reserve Fund that's unallocated for any particular project right now. At this point, we don't anticipate moving any money to the Capital Reserve Fund from the 1617 year, simply because that large swing that I just discussed was really on the revenue side. It really wasn't on the expenditure side. So you have to be careful. When you transfer money to the Capital Reserve Fund, that actually is an expense that shows in your budget, and you can't overspend any fiscal year's budget. So many times, we wait until the final audit is complete to see if there is any flexibility left on the expenditure budget, but right now, we're not anticipating any transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund, which would leave us with about $1.5 million that's in there right now in unallocated funds. That could be used for additional projects. But as you know, we do have a number of projects in the pipeline, including the elementary school air conditioning projects, we have that. We have roofing projects that are being completed this summer. We have the remaining elementary schools for the camera system upgrade, that's also in the pipeline. So there are a number of projects in the pipeline, but with that said, we still have roughly $1.5 million for capital projects that's unallocated.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Act 1 index, just to explain what the Act 1 index is, I referenced the resolution not to exceed the Act 1 index. Act 1 simply was passed in 2006, Act 1 of 2006, which limited school districts' ability to raise taxes beyond an inflationary index. There's more provisions to the law, but that's the one piece that people kind of equate Act 1 with. And the chart on the board shows what has happened to that index over the past couple of years, and it has a projection out for the next four or five years. So the Act 1 index actually reached a peak in 2008 and '09, which is an indication that this is a lagging index, because one would argue that we were in the midst of a recession, so how could the index actually go up to its peak during the midst of a recession? It is a lagging index. In 1112, it reached a low point of 1.4%. Arguably, we were climbing out of the recession at that point, yet we hit the low point of the Act 1 index. It is stabilizing now, it was 2.4% in the 1617 year, 2.5% in 1718, and we are projecting that to go up to roughly 3% over the next three or four years. Hover around 3% to 3.3%. And those projections actually also are substantiated by the Pennsylvania IFO Office, Independent Fiscal Office. Now, we had some preliminary discussion about our fund balance. Let's talk about our fund balance and what fund balance actually means. Fund balance is the school district's rainy day fund, if you will, the school district's savings account. It's the cumulative revenue over expenses over time. These are our reserves. So there's three main pieces besides the inventory piece. We have $2.7 million assigned for our self-insurance fund for medical. We have $14.4 million, again, that the board had the foresight to start putting away as a commitment to address the increasing PISERS expenses. That's $14.4 million, and again, Mr. O'Donnell, we do anticipate a recommendation to add to that figure this year. Then the final piece is what's called the unassigned piece. It's reserves that is not allocated for any particular purpose, and by law, that amount cannot exceed 8%. Right now, our reserve is roughly 7.8%. So all told, our total fund balance is $36.7 million, and we do anticipate adding to that to the tune of about $6 million at the end of the current fiscal year. Fund balance is very important, something we discussed at the Finance Committee. We talked about equating our fund balance and how that pertains to the district's borrowing and our bond rating and the debt the district incurs. And I mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting that our bonds are rated according to our degree of risk, or risk of default, and North Penn is very fortunate to have a double-A 1 rating from Moody's, which puts us in elite company. There's only 17 or 18 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania that have a double-A 1 rating or better. And I can tell you unequivocally, the primary reason why we have a double-A 1 rating is simply because of our fund balance. We do have a healthy fund balance. It helps us plan for the future, it helps mitigate the PISERS increase. By having a very high bond rating, that actually lowers the borrowing costs and saves taxpayers' money. We equated through the help of our bond underwriters and our financial advisors that upgrade that we got from Moody's this past time around. Our bonds were upgraded from double-A 2 to double-A 1. That saved taxpayers about $600,000 over the life of the bonds, just by having that bond upgrade. So that illustrates how important having fund balance is. There's a balance, though. You know, how much is too much. I think right now, the district is at a sweet spot. We're at a really good position to address the PISERS upcoming increases and to still maintain a level that's very reasonable to keep our bond rating and to maintain an adequate level that's recommended by our auditors. Okay, I mentioned earlier that our 1718 budget includes roughly $7 million total increase to our expenditures. I have seven items up on the board that basically cover, more than cover, that $7 million increase. It really can be broken down to seven items. The first item is PISERS. PISERS stands for the Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System. That is projected to increase based on our employer rate next year to the $3 million increase. Again, half of that is reimbursed by the state, so our net increase is 1.5 million. I think it's important to point out that virtually every employee in North Penn School District is covered under the PISERS program. It's not just one segment of our employees, it's virtually everyone, with few exclusions. And the PISERS fund itself is funded by a variety of mechanisms. We have one piece being funded by the school district and the local taxpayers. We have one piece being funded by the state. We have another piece being funded by employees. Everyone that is in the PISERS system makes a contribution from his or her paycheck into the pension fund. Most people are at 7.5%. Most of our employees are at 7.5%. That's deducted from paychecks, and that money is sent to PISERS. And then the other component that makes up the PISERS fund, actually the largest portion of it, comes from capital gains and interest earnings and dividends and things like that. So that's how the fund itself is made up. The reason we're in the situation we are now has nothing to do with the school district not paying what it was supposed to pay, or employees not contributing what they're supposed to contribute. It really stems, my opinion, from a couple of factors. Number one is, there was a law passed in 2001 by the Pennsylvania Legislature that basically gave a 25% increase to school employees for pension and a 50% increase for legislators. That was okay, I suppose, at the time. The pension fund was funded at 120% at that point in time. It was flush with cash. If everyone retired that day, they would have enough money to cover all the obligations. Well, a couple of things happened since the increase in 2001. By the way, the school district employer share in 2001 was about 1%. It's going to be nearly 33% next year. A couple of things happened. We had 9/11, we had the crash of the internet bubble, we had a recession. So the pension obligation for employers started increasing dramatically. Something happened at a legislative level then to address that. Some people call it kicking the can down the road. There were some accounting changes to how capital gains and capital losses were recognized, and there were some other things to kind of mitigate the increases that really should have been in place back in the mid and late 2000s and kind of put them off to a later date. Well, we're at that later date now. We're in uncharted territory right now, being in the 30-plus percent range for pension, because quite frankly, up until the last couple of years, only one time in the history of PISERS did the employer rate ever go over 20%. And now the last couple of years, we're over 30%, and we think it's going to stay there for about the next 20 years. So, again, this is no fault of employees, it's, I guess, the fault of recession number one in the early 2000s, recession number two in the late 2000s, accounting trickery with the way capital gains and losses were recognized at the pension fund, and the 25% increase to the pension for school employees and 50% increase for legislators back in 2001. The next item we discuss, Chromebooks. We're purchasing 3,600 Chromebooks for grades 6, 11, and 12. We plan on taking possession of the Chromebooks and making that purchase in July of this year, and that cost in the budget is $1.5 million. Unlike the purchase we made this year, that will be an outright purchase, will not be a lease. Our debt service going up $930,000. Debt service is our repayment of principal and interest on our bond issues. The $930,000 increase next year is attributable to the second-phase borrowing that we did for the Montgomery Elementary School renovation project. The next item, the salary line item increase is going up $916,000 for the upcoming year. That is roughly a 0.75% increase in total salaries budget to budget. With that is, including no new positions in next year's budget, and we are eliminating 15 positions, 14 of which are through attrition. And I believe, Dr. Dietrich, you'd like to comment on impact in the classroom. There's eight instructional positions that are not being filled next year, and seven support services positions, support staff positions that aren't being filled, but I believe, Dr. Dietrich, would like to address the instructional eight positions.
Yeah, just so everyone's clear, the eight positions are due to application of the same-class size guidelines that we've had in place for quite a few years now. We do have some shifts in enrollment, some smaller class sizes. When I say class size, I mean total classes of, you know, 790, 800, 850 kids coming through, and we have some classes of more than 1,000 coming through the system and graduating. So as that occurs, and some shifts occur, and depending where those classes are at grade level-wise, it does result in a different number of positions needed. So we haven't changed the class-size guidelines, still applying the same ones, and then that would mean that we would be able to reduce that number of instructional positions.
Okay, moving on, our medical and prescription costs for the upcoming year are projected to increase the budget by $725,000. Tuition for charter schools, cyber schools, and outplacement of students, $462,000, and diesel fuel for our bus fleet. We were able to get a low point, pretty much, in diesel pricing last year, January of 2016. Our bid this year resulted in an increase of about $114,000. So, again, those seven items result in a $7.7 million increase to our expenditure budget. Our expenditure budget is only going up $7 million, so that shows you that there were cuts in other areas when you just take a look at these seven factors. For a point of reference, if the district raised taxes, if the board raised taxes to full Act 1 index, that would generate $4.2 million in new revenue to the school district. So even at a full Act 1 increase, that still would not be enough money to cover the $7 million increase in expenditures. The makeup of our budget is really from three areas. The largest piece coming from salaries, which makes sense, we're a service organization, it makes sense that the largest piece comes from salaries. Nearly 50% benefits, 30%, that would include pension obligation, our share of Social Security and Medicare, medical benefits, life insurance, things like that. Our debt service- Our debt service, payment of principal and interest, that's roughly 10%. So when you factor in those three items alone, you're already at 90% of the budget. Now, a couple additional comments on our retirement rates, since this continues to be the largest driving force in our budget, and North Penn is no different than any other school district in the Commonwealth. This continues to be the biggest financial challenge facing school districts. It's been for the last couple of years. It will continue until that rate eventually levels off at 34% or 35%. The staggering number to me is if we go back a mere seven years and we take a look at the total amount the district paid in, it was $6.1 million in 2010-11. Next year, we're going to be close to $40 million. So a $34 million increase to the budget in a mere seven years really is a staggering figure. And the retirement rate, I mentioned earlier that back in 2001, when there was a legislative change, the employer share was roughly 1%. Those are some low numbers in the early 2000s, and you can see how it steadily climbed. The first year, it eclipsed 20% or more was in the '15-'16 year. Again, at that point, that was only the second time in the history of the pension fund that the employer share exceeded 20%. And now, being over 30% is what the new normal is, I suppose. To illustrate the impact this is having on the North Penn budget, we take a look at our pension obligation compared to the overall expenditure budget. And in the '17-'18 year, we're going to be near an all-time high of 16%. So of all of our expenses going out of the school district, roughly 16 cents on every dollar comes from pension. Seven years ago, we were under 3%. So again, quite a dramatic five-fold increase in a mere seven years. I'd like to move on to the second part of any budget equation, and that's our revenues, the income coming into the school district. Couple of quick notes on our revenue assumptions. We're using our tax-based figures. That's the total assessed value of all of our properties in the North Penn School District through March, and we're assuming a 97% collection rate in our real estate taxes. That takes into account those properties that pay under the 2% discount. That takes into account those property owners that don't pay their taxes and are turned over as delinquent. We'll talk a little bit about our earned income tax and our realty transfer tax in a moment, but we are basically looking at our other revenues based on historical and economic projections. At the state level, two big components of our state funding are the, what's called the BEF, the Basic Education Funding, and the SEF, the Special Education Funding. We took one-half of what was proposed by Governor Wolf in his February budget address. So for example, in North Penn, the governor proposed a $282,000 increase based on his budget address. At North Penn School District, we budgeted half of that, $141,000. So we hope we get to 282, but quite frankly, the North Penn budget will probably be passed before the state budget is passed. So to be conservative, we used half of what the governor presented in his budget. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, Steve. You've been sending out emails to the board on the updates of the revenue coming in in Pennsylvania, and from what I've been reading, they're like a billion dollars short. What's to talk among the administrators? Is that going to affect us?
Well, at this point in time, the governor proposed a $100 million increase to basic education funding and $50 million to special ed. The House passed its own version of the budget and kept those figures intact. So clearly, though, there's going to be a major financial challenge in the state's budget to be able to keep those figures where they're at. We're hopeful they will stay there, but to be determined. That's the reason, though, because of the large state budget shortfall, we felt to be conservative, to be more realistic, to budget one-half of what the governor presented. On the special ed side, the governor presented a $67,000 increase for special education. We budgeted half of that, $33,000.
Just so everyone's clear, the other part of the budget that the House passed does also include the governor's request to cut transportation subsidies by 50 million total. And we're hopeful that the Senate and the ultimate reconciliation that would hopefully occur thereafter would include that transportation subsidy, because we did include the transportation subsidy in our budget. But truth be told, the House version doesn't have that in there.
The other piece of state funding is the Ready to Learn Block Grant, $577,000. That's level funded, as is our federal programs. So our revenue pie shapes up like this. 78% comes from local sources, primarily real estate taxes. 21% comes from the state. 1% comes from federal funds. And a large reason for this is North Penn School District is viewed as a wealthy school district by the state, based on our market value and our personal income values and so forth. So there's very little state aid relative to some of our peers throughout the state. Probably a more common makeup of that pie statewide for districts is probably closer to 2/3 coming from local and 1/3 coming from the state. You can see we're far below any kind of state support compared to statewide averages. So there's three components of revenue. I mentioned local revenue, state revenue, and federal revenue. Our local revenue is made up of primarily four items. Our real estate tax and our interim taxes, our earned income tax, that's the 1% tax also called the EIT, Earned Income Tax, local tax, 1% tax, the transfer tax, the realty transfer tax, and delinquent taxes. But the largest piece comes from the real estate taxes. It's important to us to follow the tax base in the school district. That's the value of all the properties in the school district, because even if there's no tax increase theoretically and practically and from past experience, even if there's no tax increase, you should generate more in real estate taxes year over year. Why? Well, if the total value of all the properties is going up, even if the tax increase is zero, you should be generating more real estate taxes. And historically, our annualized increase for the past 10 years has been roughly 0.55% in an increase in our tax base. We did have one year that actually went down, 2009, 10, to 10/11, and that was because of commercial properties filing tax assessment appeals during the recession, arguing that their assessed values were too high. And because of those reductions, our overall assessed value decreased. You've seen some nice increases over the past couple of years because of the school district's concerted effort to file reverse appeals to get values where they should be for commercial properties. However, we do have an anomaly this year. In the '17-'18 year, unfortunately, we're not seeing a 0.55% increase in our tax base. Basically, we're seeing no increase in our tax base. And that is primarily driven by one tax assessment appeal that unfortunately, we were on the short end of, that is basically going to result in an $841,000 annual revenue loss to the school district. This was a property located on South Broad Street, formerly owned by one of our largest taxpayers. The property was sold to another entity. The building was pretty much gutted and is in the process of being repurposed. But in the meantime, the property owner filed an assessment appeal arguing that the value of the property should be the value they paid for the property. Long story short, the assessed value was decreased from $35.9 million down to $1.1 million in assessed value. So that's a $34.8 million decrease in assessed value for one property. That basically ate up all the other gains that we had through tax assessment appeal settlements and just natural growth, new properties coming onto our rolls through vacant land being developed or improvements being made to properties. Again, that's an $841,000 decrease to our revenue in the upcoming year. Now, as that property gets built out and repurposed, there'll be a tax assessment appeal filed by North Penn School District. There'll be a new assessment put on it by the county, but in all likelihood, we'll file an assessment appeal to get an increase. But I can tell you that the assessed value of $35.9 million that was in place before, it'll never be reached again. So for the upcoming year, our assessed...
Steve? Sorry. What is the percentage of the taxes coming from our largest taxpayer?
Percentage? I don't have the percentage memorized, but I can tell you that it's roughly $13 million a year in real estate taxes coming from our largest taxpayer, out of roughly $170 million in collection. So around 10%. The upcoming year has our tax base going up, again, not 0.55% like the 10-year average, but a paltry 0.06%. So if there were no tax increase, that would generate a meager $97,000 in additional revenue in a $250 million budget. It's basically, as we joke sometimes, a rounding error. That is very, you know, very little money, very little growth in our tax base, again, largely because of this one sale of a property and corresponding tax assessment appeal. So the bottom line is, we're not getting help in our tax base growth that we typically would. It would be very common to pick up several hundred thousand dollars just in tax base growth year over year. We're not seeing that this upcoming year. The second-largest piece of our local revenue is the EIT, the Earned Income Tax. This is something we pay particular attention to, and this is driven by economic factors. There's no question. In our current fiscal year, we have $15.5 million budgeted for the EIT. We're actually going to bump that up to $16 million in the coming year, a $500,000 increase. That'll be our largest budget figure of EIT that we've ever had before. We are projecting the EIT to finish this year around $16 million, and then we're budgeting $16 million next year. Our concern is the EIT actually dipped from 2015 to 2016. You'll notice on the chart that we brought in $16.4 million in the '15 year, and that actually went down in the '15-'16 year to $16.2 million. So a $200,000 decrease in our EIT over that two-year period. So we think we're pushing the envelope. We're still comfortable with the $16 million figure for the upcoming year, but I point this out to say that in years past, we've been very fortunate and conservative with the budgeting on revenue, and we've been able to bring in more money than what was budgeted. Some years, it was several hundred thousand dollars higher than what was budgeted in the EIT. In fact, I think there was one year that it was about a million dollars over what was budgeted in the EIT. I can assure you that we will not collect a million dollars more than what's budgeted in the upcoming year. Mr. O'Donnell, I bet a lunch that we will bring in at least $16 million, but I don't anticipate it being much higher than $16 million. So again, the point to illustrate here is we're being more aggressive with our revenue budget, and we don't expect large surpluses at the end of the year. In fact, if you take a look at our actual figures over the last three years compared to our budget figures, that variance from year to year continues to shrink. Our budget figures keep getting closer and closer to our actual figures. Obviously, the '16-'17 year will be an anomaly because of those one-time revenues that were brought in, but if you look back at the past three years, our budgets are getting tighter and tighter and tighter. And I can say, this is my fourth budget I'm presenting to the board. This by far is the tightest budget that we're presenting to the board, both on the revenue and on the expenditure side. The third-largest item in our local revenue is our realty transfer tax. This is a tax that is levied anytime a property sells. The school district receives one-half of 1%. The municipality receives one-half of 1%. The state receives 1%. We're pushing the envelope with this figure as well. We're increasing our budget figure for the realty transfer tax to $3.1 million. That's also $500,000 higher than we have budgeted this year. Okay, state revenue. Just a quick breakdown on our state revenue. Again, this represents 21% of our total revenue. The largest piece of our pie in purple on the chart is 39%. That's the subsidy we receive from our retirement expense. The second-largest piece is the BEF, the Basic Ed Funding. That's 20% of our overall state funding. And the third is 13% special education funding. But we also receive money for transportation, Social Security, and the property tax reduction. That's the homestead exemption that appears on the tax bills. We receive gambling proceeds from the state, and we turn that money around dollar for dollar and include that on eligible homesteads. We actually, in the upcoming year, the figure is going to be $5.1 million. That will be given back to homeowners through the homestead exemption, and we're projecting that to be roughly a $210 credit on the tax bills of those eligible homestead properties.
What was the last year?
$204.
Thank you.
Our basic ed subsidy, the BEF that we talked about earlier, we're projecting a $10 million budget line item for that in the upcoming year, up slightly over the current year. You'll notice that back in 2009, 10, 11, there was actually a reduction in our basic education funding from the state. As a percent of our total revenue budget, we continue to receive around 4% of our revenue budget comes from basic education funding, and that's down from 5.2% back in 2005. And this illustrates we're receiving less support from the state than we did in the Finally, I'd like to conclude with a couple tax scenarios just to put things in perspective. Tonight, we are recommending to the board a tax increase of 1.99%. That would generate an additional $3.378 million in tax revenue. That would leave us with slightly under a $5 million deficit, and for the average homestead, that would result in a $71 increase. For informational purposes, we have some other scenarios, hypothetical scenarios on the chart. So with a 0% tax increase, obviously, there'd be no increase to the homeowner. We leave the district in a situation with an $8.3 million budget deficit. At 2.5%, the full Act I index, that would result in $4.2 million in additional revenue, still leaving a deficit of $4.1 million overall, and that would be a 90% increase. So the delta between 1.99% and 2.5% is about $845,000. So what we're recommending compared to the Act I index, there's a difference of $845,000. So tonight, again, we're asking for the board's adoption of the proposed final budget. The budget can and will change between now, if the board passes the budget this evening, and the final budget. As new information comes in, we will continue to refine and update the budget. Part of the board resolution that's in front of you tonight will include an advertising period. If the board approves the proposed final budget tonight, we plan on having a newspaper advertisement in on Friday and having our website updated for public inspection. The document that we're required to allow for public inspection is called the PDE 2028 Form. It's posted on our website for tonight's meeting, and I believe it was in the board members' packets, and we will be posting on the main webpage and also the Finance Committee webpage tomorrow morning as well. And then we would ask for the adoption of the final budget on June 15th.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski and the board. I'd be happy to address any questions.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Mr. Shiroki, for a great presentation and also the Finance Committee for working and hammering this out. I know a lot of effort and work went into it, and I know it's a real tight budget from years past, and I just want to thank everybody involved. It was a great presentation. I really mean it. You really covered everything. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve, looking at next year, what does next year look like for us?
'18-'19 fiscal year is going to be a concern. So factoring out the Chromebook purchase, we'll be carrying over a $3.5 million deficit. We know we're going to have roughly $3 million added to our pension obligation. I was looking at the five-year projections today. You know, it's really tough to go out multiple years, but based on the information we know now, we could be looking at, even with its tax increase in '18-'19 year, somewhere in the neighborhood of a $6 to $7 million deficit in the '18-'19 year. I mentioned at our last Finance Committee meeting, I'm far more worried about the '18- '19 fiscal year than I am the '17-'18 year. So we are already worrying and planning for the '18-'19 year, because that will be just as or even more challenging than the '17-'18 year, which is our tightest budget in recent memory.
And how long do you project that piecers stabilization rate fund to last?
In our presentations to the Finance Committee, we outlined what I think is a pretty good plan to utilize the rate stabilization fund and kind of wean us off these increases that we're seeing. And once the piecers rate gets leveled off, that's when it would be the perfect timing for the fund to be exhausted. So in our latest presentation we made to the Finance Committee, we have a six-year period to draw down that $14.4 million. But I mentioned earlier tonight that there is a possibility we'll be recommending to the Finance Committee and the full board possibly assigning another $2.5 million to that stabilization fund. So that could actually take us out another year or possibly even another two years to get us to maybe a seven- or an eight-year period before that piecers rate stabilization fund will be exhausted. And again, the hope in seven years is hopefully we're not only leveled off, maybe if we can even get a downtick, we'll take, you know, we'll take a 10-basis-point downtick at this point compared to the dramatic increases. We'll take any kind of leveling or decrease, and hopefully, that will happen in the next seven years. The stock market has had a tremendous performance, especially since November, and hopefully, that will help mitigate the increase in the employer share for the upcoming year.
Just got to pray for a miracle. My goodness.
Any other comments?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary. Is it, how would we call it? What do we call it?
Proposed final.
Proposed final budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, my board secretary hat on now. So roll call. This is for adoption of the 201718 proposed final budget. Mr. McGee?
Approve, yes.
Mr. D'Asio?
No.
Mr. Kerr?
Aye.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mrs. Charnock?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes, with a statement. Can I make a statement? May I make a statement?
Well, we're just calling the vote. You want to make it? Go ahead.
All right. Again, thank you for this budget. I originally was going to vote no, because I thought we should be going to our full max of 2.5, or at least 2.25, which is our increase in expenditures. But after you've said that we've kind of found $6 million, and the difference between the 1.99 and the 2.5 is about $800,000, I can approve this budget, and so my vote is yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-2. Thank you. Pardon me while I get my document back here. Again, I threw it away. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All votes? Done.